Good evening, everybody. It is January sixth, twenty twenty-two. Happy New Year to all. I'll start by reading our vision statement. The first time this year, the Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student. Through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners when race their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by W A C A Cable TV this evening and our order of business is as follows. Opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. Do we have presentations tonight, Jim, other than?
No.
What's listen? No. Public comment. We, the administrative items include the superintendent's update. On the COVID nineteen update equity audit blueprint for continuous student improvement update. There will be an initial budget discussion for the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. The Mindes School building update Paul Kendall, Warren approvals Paul Kendall. The consent actions include the approval of minutes December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Acceptance of gifts and donations, committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. So I will take attendance and make sure that everybody is okay with this order of business. I'm starting with you, Mark Terry.
Yes.
Paul Kendall.
Yes.
Tina Fatanides.
Here in yes.
And Aaron Williams. Don't see Aaron yet, but we do have a quorum, so we are going to move forward.
I see Aaron.
You do?
Yeah, you see her square.
I see her square, but I don't see a name and and perhaps she's muted. There you are, Aaron. You're here and yes, okay. All right. Thank you. Excellent. All right. We will start by asking if there are any members of the public who would like to offer public comment this evening. If you are wanting to do that, just please unmute yourself or raise your hand and let me know that you're here and you want to share something. And seeing none, we will go on, Jim, to your first item on your update, the COVID nineteen update.
Sure. I'm gonna defer some time here quickly to Audrey and Ed as. You know, I know Audrey's been at it all day and so is Ed, but there she's also just got out of some interviews for the for the school system, so. I think before I give my update. Audrey, you know, I asked you to just come on and and give your perspective as to the first four days since we've come back from break and and how folks are feeling, especially from your staff. And really leave it at that. And if there are some questions from the school committee, then certainly they can have at it.
Jim, just before you do that, Aaron was having audio problems.
Okay.
She's not being allowed to.
I I I changed it, so she should have access now that.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I tried to unmute her.
She can do it now.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, Audrey, Ed, who's? Who's sharing?
Have Audrey go.
Audrey, please.
Hi.
Hello.
So it's it's been a busy week. I think it really started last last Friday. I think is when it all happened, I think. With Ed being reassigned, sort of the some of the duties fell upon us to pick up the slack a little bit, but the cases really started to pour in. Around Thursday, a lot of us worked a lot of hours over the weekend, but I have to say, all of the nurses, you should be so proud of them. They come to work every day, willing to work with a smile on their face. They're working tremendous amount of hours, not complaining and just getting it done, knowing it's important. So Warren had a horrendous day today. I haven't talked to Michelle. I think she's probably still working. So I don't know exactly what happened there. I do know that they just kept finding kids that were were positive all day long in different classrooms, so. This week has been not one building, pit away maybe because of their population. There's a lot smaller, but every building has seemed huge. I haven't, today, before Warren puts in their numbers, I know we've had sixteen cases today. The amount of tracing, I can speak for my building. I've had nine cases to trace Tuesday, went total Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And that's probably one of the the least. I don't really know where Mendez is at today, but tracing involves a lot of work for myself and for the administrators. Once you hear about a case, they've got to start to do the tracing, which means that they've got to go find the teachers and look at seating charts. And then we have to look at this spreadsheet and see the students vaccine status, an email has to go out to the parents. We have to do follow up phone calls and then there's the testing. The kids are great. The kids do what they're supposed to do. They come down, they are happy to comply. But it's time out of class. It's fifteen, twenty minutes out of class that they're missing, four days in a row out of a particular class. But I haven't put the numbers together, Jim. You can probably speak to the numbers that have come in in the last, even just since Monday. But it's not, it's not sustainable. But to the bigger point is that doing the contact tracing and all the testing. I don't feel it's a good, a good mitigation strategy. As they say, the horse is out of the barn. COVID is everywhere. Testing and contact tracing is not going to decrease the amount of cases. It's not gonna, it's it's not gonna make it go away. So I've asked Jim, you know, if that's something that we can can eliminate and and put our focus on to testing. Because when you do test and stay, you can't test the vaccinated kids. They're exempt. So we're not testing the vaccinated kids at all. So can we just eliminate the test to stay and concentrate our efforts on the testing the symptomatic, vaccinated and unvaccinated, because we know COVID doesn't care anymore whether you're vaccinated or not. It's just coming and hitting everyone. I think that'll be better. And I think continuing the masks, I think that's working. And parents have got to step up to the plate as well and just not send their kids when they're sick. And I think we're all doing the best we can. But this contact tracing, I know my nurse leader group, they they can't do it anymore either. We're all at our breaking point. Administrators, parents, us nursing staff. So I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer, but we are willing to do the work. We are willing to test. We want to test. And send the kids home that need to go home. Anyway. What do you got, Ed?
Yeah, so just kind of echo what Audrey's saying. So on this past Friday, when I walked in, there were sixty-five new cases for us to try to get through townwide. And obviously, you know, part of that sixty-five affects the schools. So I was working with Raj and this week, just for us to stay caught up and to be able to document that the outreach that we're supposed to do according to the Department of Public Health. Be literally this week did not call people. We, then when a case came in, we sent a letter and get in with their isolation instructions, just because we just, they kept pouring in one after another, after another, and they're still coming in. I think we we must have sent out probably close to two hundred letters this week. Again, just we we don't even have time to even call people anymore at this point till it slows down. We'll obviously have to pick it up again. On a good note, now that we made the testing site by appointment, it's logical now and people drive up, get their test and they drive away and they're not waiting in those gigantic lines. Sarah, I'm sure can attest to that. But again, it's just, but we are still, you know, testing staff if they need to be tested at my office. You know, I've tested, I think, twenty-two people yesterday, another fourteen today. So that continues. That's kind of what I have.
So I I I want to chime in there though, Ed, and and make sure that the committee knows and those folks who are are watching at home and will eventually watch this, but I I I think the the email I sent out last week to the town manager, I think it's important to note that that a lot of Ed's time, obviously, since March of twenty, he's really been focused on COVID for the entire town and keeping the entire community safe. And, you know, he, we received an email last week as as department heads, if you will, within the structure of the town and it took us by surprise that they were removing Ed out of the full-time role of of the director for COVID and to put him, we understand that the police force and and is also being hit by COVID and their number of staff members who are out and or they don't have all positions filled. But that meant Ed not actually being committed to the COVID response task force for five days. Well, for him, it was seven, but normally. But but the five days throughout the week that would normally be there for us to to utilize for testing, to get the numbers, the every morning Ed would run reports and then have to do the legwork on identifying families of Ashland Public School students and those students themselves. And then that gets shipped over to all of the nursing staff. We then need to start the process of determining, okay, was that kid in school? What's the contact tracing look like? Do we have test and stay in order? So there are these layers upon layers that people don't see and they don't understand that these are sixteen to eighteen hour days that are being put in to keep everyone safe and that was going away. And, you know, we've, you know, Ed is always gracious with his time, but, you know, it was disheartening that that was the 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 tact that the town was going to take at that time. That being said, certainly, I think, you know, Michael has, you know, Herbert has realized that this is really critically important through the surge that and there's been some adjustments and I want to thank him for that. And I think Ed, you know, would say that too. We've made some adjustments and making sure that that when testing needs to occur from a town side, from a school side, we're making that available. We've made some adjustments internally on how to get some data, so my office can actually distribute data to the nurse's office in in the mornings, so Ed can just run something for me. We can do the legwork that he was doing in helping on that that front. I don't think it's necessarily sustainable long term, but I think to to get us through this this surge, this is what we're going to do. We all need to have hands on deck and and support one another. And I think you know, we're all willing to do that. And so, you know, I I I wanted to start there by thanking Ed and for that, you know, work that he's doing continuously that I don't think people truly understand. That being said, you know, COVID, I'm just gonna go back to the twenty-third. I shared this information with staff as well as, you know, other superintendents and and Ed and Audrey, but we've had since the twenty-third of of December, and I'm going to add in today's number sixteen. Audrey had the same number you did, so we're at least on the same page. And that doesn't include the Warren. I I get it. But we're we're up to over a hundred and eighty, I think it's a hundred and eighty-four cases since the twenty-third. And since Monday, we've had ninety. So that's in four days. It's a lot of work behind the scenes that people aren't seeing. The interesting stuff that comes out of this data is you dig a little more deeply. We've had about a seventeen percent absentee rate of students across the district, and that's pretty consistent in all the buildings. It's fluctuated a little bit, fourteen to eighteen percent, or but it's about seventeen percent. The majority of our cases of students, eighty, over eighty percent are students who are who are hundred percent vaccinated. So it doesn't mean they have their boosters. We don't know that status of some of them. But in terms of the vaccination rate, it's it's over eighty percent of those who are who are testing positive. I think what's important too is as we, you know, slow down a little bit, we put a pause on some things. You know, athletics, Stephen is here. I I will be clear. I have written to the M I A A. I said, you know, it's your bailiwick. You're you're the ones who's making decisions for all of athletics across the Commonwealth. You need to step up to the plate and give give guidance to our athletic directors and our principals. Because the Department of Ed has made it clear that is not in their wheelhouse. They will not make decisions for the M I A A. But I also think smartly, you know, if it's just to put a pause on it for a week and let things slow down, we want our kids to continue to play sports. We want them to participate. So how we approach it is critically important. I think Stephen's been very thoughtful in the sports that we've we've put a pause on during the the break. You know, girls' basketball was put on pause because of the number of cases. Right now, we've got wrestling and hockey currently. Is that right, Stephen? Make shake the head, yep. You know, Loring Arena has been shut down for hockey, so Stephen, for the next two weeks, I believe, and then you know, so Stephen's got to be working extra time to try to find sheets of ice for for our hockey teams when they come back. So there's a lot of moving parts here. You know, I I certainly you know, think that we'll get through this. I really believe this is the surge right now. Come Monday, the tenth, when I look at the data, we have currently twenty-five staff members who are out with COVID. It does not, that number does not include probably eight to ten who are you know, out because their their child's got COVID or their in their spouse has COVID or they've got to quarantine for a close contact or whatever it might be, right? That doesn't include those numbers. But twenty-three of those folks are due to come back on Monday of the twenty-five. The majority of the the students who are out that we're talking about, the the two hundred, the majority of them will be back also come Monday. That being said, I I was in Audrey's office today and as I was there, I'd written a an email today to the Commissioner of Education. Talking about how dissatisfied we were with the number of of the things that are happening, contact racing, test and stay, things of that nature, and he happened to call me while I was in Audrey's office. And I I want to give him full credit. He never backs down from, if if you're concerned or if you've got a you know, complaint, he'll he'll call us right back as superintendent, and I really appreciate that. They are rethinking how they approach certain things such as contact tracing and test and stay, but it's not as simple as just them making a decision. They have the medical community that needs to weigh in on on anything that they're proposing. So there's a process that that we don't see as a general public either. But what I said to him today was, here's the deal. Either you want us in school for teaching and learning or you just want us in school to have kids in school. And we, I don't feel like we're putting forth the best effort to teach and for our kids to be learning when we're spending time. Warren's the prime example. Pete Reagan sitting there and he spent eight hours today, I guarantee it, with his staff, testing kids throughout the whole day and then calling parents, writing emails, following up with parents. We're in school, not for the for learning. That's what it feels like to me. And I said that to the to the commissioner. I said, either you want us in school for teaching and learning, or you just want us in school as a way to keep, you know, schools open. You can't have it both ways. We've we've got to either recognize the fact that schools are there for learning and you've got to help provide support to Audrey, to to the principals, to the assistant principals, to the teachers, so we can teach and learn and whether he heard that loud and clear, I'm not sure, but it was said, so. So that's where we are with COVID. Like I said, eighty percent are are fully vaccinated students right now. And I will, I will stop there with the COVID update. There's really nothing more than just dire data, so.
Jim, I don't know if you know this, but myself and Amy Childs both spoke last night at the Select Ward Meeting advocating for more return or more flexibility for Ed because of what's happening. And we understand the shortages on on the police squad, but that this need is so dire in this moment. So I'm glad to hear that Michael's been flexible. I'm I'm worried about, you know, there's a time when teachers need to be tested or other employees need to be tested and he's out on patrol and like literally on a call and can't, like it it works now until it doesn't. So I've been having very frank, you know, conversations with Michael over text of just saying like, you know, I think it's short sighted and that we, but you know, I'm glad to hear that some flexibility has been allowed, which is good. And obviously, Ed, you know, we appreciate everything you're doing. One piece of feedback that I have is there seems to be no, a lack of clarity at the guardian level of what happens when. So I think, like, for example, I didn't know that we couldn't test vaccinated kids. I just learned that with what Audrey shared. And I'm feeling a lot of questions just from my friends in town of wait, my kid, you know, I had to go pick my kid up, but why didn't they test them? Why didn't, wasn't it tested instead? So maybe like a flow chart of our decision tree to help the parents.
Yeah, we've shared it numerous times, but we'll 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 send another one.
Okay.
We have. And Aaron, to your point, I I totally understand. Audrey and I, we go back. I was sitting with another nurse today. I mean, the the decision tree and the protocols. First of all, they're changing almost daily at the CDC level and then to the Department of Public Health and then to you know, Department of Ed. But I want to emphasize that while people may not be seeing it, we've shared it numerous ways and numerous, I mean, Audrey's always saying, hey, Jim, do you think that this will look better for someone to understand it? Or not? So so we will share it again. We'll continue to. But, you know, we've, we've certainly made it clear that test and stay students who are vaccinated are not allowed. That's the Department of Ed and I've written that numerous times, but that's fine. People, there are so many emails coming at people. They miss it and I totally appreciate that.
We're trying to make something a little bit more clear, Aaron. It's just finding the the actual five minutes to actually do it.
So Audrey, let me, let me think of, so it's essentially right, like if you've been tested and you're awaiting results, don't come to school. If you've been vaccinated and you don't feel good, go home. We can't test you. If you want to go get a PCR, you can. If you're in school and unvaccinated, we test you. If you're negative, you stay and if you're positive, you go home.
Only, no, no, not, no.
Only if you're a close contact.
Correct.
You're close contact.
Only if you're considered a close contact.
Or you don't feel good.
Nope.
Never had.
Not, or if you don't feel good. It it if if you have symptoms and you're not a close contact, you were not tested by us. That's not how it works. You, we tell you to go home.
Okay.
Yeah. So so here's the deal, right? So here's the other part of the conversation I had with the commissioner is we're, we're at the point where I'm at the point where I'm saying, we're not following your rules anymore. We believe that we should be following and looking at symptomatic folks, whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated. And that those folks should be tested. And that's, so Audrey and I and the nursing staff are in that discussion as to how we move forward with that component. And and I told the commissioner point blank, you may not like what we're gonna do, but we're going to do it because we think it's the best thing to do to keep kids in school and to keep the sanity of our of our nursing staff. We're blessed here. We have ten nurses in the district. That's more than many districts have across the Commonwealth. But I'm telling you right now, they are all stressed out. And when I go from building to building daily to just, I really go to see the nurses to make sure they're doing okay. And it's it's a lot of work. But sorry, Paul.
No, no, sorry. I cut you off. Audrey said it, you kind of said it there and you and I have obviously had conversations about this too and what, I mean, you're you're you kind of said you're doing it anyway and
Well, we're going to.
Go about what 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 ability do we have to change our protocols because that's really an ex, something that's exacerbating the situation, right? We are, we are using protocols developed and utilized twelve to eighteen months ago with an intent that was different and should be different twelve to eighteen months ago, right? Where we didn't have a lot of acts, zero or no or or low vaccination rates. So it means something different, but we're still doing same things that were designed for a different intent and they so how do we change our protocols? You said you you're doing that with this test and stay, but there's also you know, what's the value in these contact tracing we're doing?
Well, that's right. Yeah, to that point, Paul, that's what we're 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 going to move away from some of these things. I I I don't want to get into it here as much because it's still dialogue that Audrey, Ed and the nursing staff that we're having. But come next week, there will be some changes that the protocols that exist at the state level, we don't think work and they don't work for our our community. And that was my point to the to the commissioner. We are going to look at our own protocols and change them so we can do what's best for our schools and our our employees.
And is there anything we can do to help support that, provide you cover, you know?
I don't care.
Our part.
He's done. Yeah.
You all taking the heat, right? And, you know, it seems we say it every time and so the words seem you know, they they don't have any meaning anymore just to say thank you to to Ed and Audrey and the nursing staff and the and the other people that that have been doing in the kind of task force and stuff. But it is, you know, when when I saw that, saw the note about Ed's shift, it's like, okay, well, it's not like that work is going away, right? It's so, and and all that meant really is either he's gonna spend more time doing it, Audrey's gonna pick up some, the other staff is gonna pick up some and and but we're also doing at some of it, because the protocols, we're doing busy work that isn't adding any value. It's not doing anything and and you know, and that's driving me nuts to to, you know, and and I'm not even doing it and it drives me nuts that we're not actually working off of what is the current state of this, right?
And that's what we'll be working on over the next few days. Is is creating our own protocols that we think will be, you know, better for us.
Oh, it's just a process discussion, I guess, at this point, right? Like you, we're not making a decision tonight about anything because you need to all get together and first of all, I just want to say to Audrey and Ed, you know, thank you and I'm sorry and I know that doesn't make anything better, but and in transparency, Ed, I was one of the people that wrote to Michael with a great concern about about that decision. And I do understand that there are other considerations. And I do understand that there are other considerations and we not may not be aware of all the details and and we have to respect that that there are reasons why people do what they do, but. You know, the timing couldn't be worse, I don't think. And I just in seeing the weariness and and your faces and your voices. It's just sad all around and I'm sorry. But it sounds rather than to drag this on too much that you guys need to are gonna get together, right, Jim? And at some point you might be coming back to us with some recommendations.
No, I think we're just gonna do it.
Doing your own thing. Yeah, you're gonna you're gonna change things and we are going to hear about it at the next meeting, what's been changed.
Yeah. It's more, I I'm just giving you the heads up that that the conversations I had with the commissioner, now they've got things in the works as well. We're going to do what we think is the right thing to do in terms of testing folks within our our buildings.
Right.
And and again, part of it is not only students, but our adults that were not allowed to be attested either, right? The test and stay program didn't did not work for our adults. So so we're we're moving forward with what we think is the best way to approach it, especially focusing on symptomatic individuals. And and going from there. I I do want to say that we did get. Three hundred and sixty kits or seven hundred and twenty tests. Antigen tests that we handed out over over New Year's Day, day after and so. Staff, you know, was utilized that we were able to catch it. Quite a few cases because of that, which was great. So.
But just to be clear, we're not waiting for the state to make any changes. We're we're now shifting to, you know, hearing. What our health experts have to say. And we've we've done a lot of this all along and and trying to maintain local control, doing what's right for us. Just so anybody who's watching is clear, we're not waiting for the state to make any changes. You guys are gonna get together and you're gonna make some changes and you're gonna be filling us all in on what they are.
You'll be getting emails coming up.
Just one minute, did you want to?
I did, yeah, I just had a quick question. I'm I'm very much in favor of, you know. Responding to the needs in our district and, you know, I applaud all of you for being so on top of this and. Thank you, you know, Ed and Audrey for all of the work that you've been doing, Jim, everybody. My question is just in terms of if we change our policies or not or our processes. Is it gonna impact our ability to access? The the funds or the kind of testing supplies from the state and how will that? I I'm just not sure if there's a correlation there.
I asked that same question to Audrey. I'll let her answer it because she had another comment, so.
So at the beginning, you had three choices to pick from the state. There was three different options you could pick, A, B, or C, or all the above, none of the above. One was to to use the state's supplies to test symptomatic individuals. Do pool testing. Or do test to stay. Some some communities chose pool testing, some chose all three, some, and I think majority of the. The school systems throughout the state picked test to stay. I think there was nine hundred of them picked the test to stay option. So that's one we chose because pool testing, we didn't find it was. Huge benefit last year. Well, the the we didn't have a great turnout that wanted it. And the symptomatic, we were a little bit worried that we would be used. Well, anyway, we just chose the test to stay. So if we want, we can back out and change with what we want to do. We can go to the symptomatic individuals. And I was gonna say before, one of the things that the communities were finding the parents are panicking about getting testing. They can't find a PCR test. They can't find a antigen test. Everything's gone. Everything's out. So we're, I just, I don't want to say in control, but if the nurses are doing the testing, we know how to do it. There's a, I don't know. You know, the accuracy of the home tests. I don't know. There's a hundred different kind of tests. It's an honor system. So the parents are just saying, oh, he tested negative. He tested negative and we we believe them because it's the honor system. But I think if the kid is symptomatic, I think. I would feel more comfortable doing the test myself.
Now, Audrey, can I ask you, like, if we eliminate the contact tracing part of this? Does that make it easier to continue on with the testing? I mean, my concern is I'm listening to this is like, I know how hard it is to find a test right now. Like for some people, that might be the only way they're getting an answer. In in an appropriate amount of time, right? Like you can book a test. Next week, but how is how does that help if you're sick now? But if you can get one at school anyhow, if 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 the contact tracing was eliminated, would that? Make it easier to continue on with some kind of testing?
Yes, we we're we're, I feel that testing symptomatic. Vaccinated and unvaccinated students and staff.
Should continue. Yeah.
It's better sense to me. We're not doing that now, but that's what I wanted to shift shift to.
Audrey, is there, do you have concern or is it more of an intent that? When you said, when you when you say we could switch to doing that. And given what you've said and Lori said about the availability of testing and people struggling. I'm concerned that they're just gonna say, when my kid's symptomatic, I can't find a damn test. I'm sending them to school.
Well.
That's what we talked about.
That's one of the things we've talked about, Paul.
You know, I'm like, you know. All the problems we've had are going to be. Triple, quadruple because the, you know, it's this, it's the easier thing to do and supposed to try to go get your own test is just. Put it, make it, make it Audrey's problem, right?
We can think about that. That that's something that. Is in the back of my mind, too. How do we solve that problem?
Can I ask a question sort of piggybacks off of that? And so that's gonna ask anyway, it's certainly beyond. The schools, but since we have Ed here as well. You know, I I know the town site or the the MBTA station is a state site. Switched from making everybody wait in line and clogging up traffic and creating problems to appointments. But I tried to get an appointment and similar to what Lori described and. Next available a couple of days ago was the end of next week. And, you know, there isn't. There's no utility in finding out the answer to the question ten days from when you really need to know. And so I don't, you know, I I don't know what the balance is between appointments only and having people wait an hour in line for two hours and backing up one thirty-five. But it it seems like somewhere in the middle there, there ought to be a better approach that allows people to get access more quickly.
So so um, so as you know, when the testing site first opened, we didn't require appointments and. We were doing on average, I would say average about two hundred a day, which was very, very manageable. And then obviously Thanksgiving hit and those numbers jumped to eight hundred to a thousand a day. It wasn't only the traffic back up to one thirty-five. There were other things that were happening that. Almost helped us make the decision to go to appointment only. Number one, on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. Commuters literally could not get to the train station to get on their trains. So the MBTA did ask us to move that Monday, Wednesday, Friday to nine to one, which we also did. The other issue we had with those times. Our school buses couldn't get up to Cerus to pick up kids. Nor drop them off in the afternoons on the Tuesday. Thursday, Sat- well, not Saturday, but Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the residents at Cerus literally couldn't get in and out of their apartments. They they didn't, it was, and then, you know. I mean, I don't want to say this, but and then it some people down there were just getting nasty. To the staff there and they were actually getting very concerned, some of them. And now we're in a predicament. And again, like everybody else, shorthanded, now they're having a hard time staffing and getting us enough people to swab down there. They're struggling trying to find people. So for now. The appointment system is gonna just have to be the way it is for now. The goal is, and they've already, they did that today, a hundred and twenty an hour. So, you know, they're still pushing through quite a few people, but now it's organized and people can get in and out.
So the the last point I want to make to is, you know, when when we talk about. Whether it's pool testing or contact tracing or test and stay. We have been not provided reliable and even getting supplies. And Audrey, you can attest to this, we've not been provided ample support at the state level like today, for instance. Pete, you know. Could have used, there was someone there to help with test and stay, one individual. And then that person left partway through the morning. And we had six more classrooms that had to be done and. We we can't, and again, it's not necessarily. The fault of the state, they can't find people either to come in and and provide the supports we need. Because every district across the Commonwealth is going through what we're going through. Natick had to bring in the National Guard with their pool testing. That that's not sustainable either for other districts, right? So. We ordered test kits before, well before. Break. We still don't have them. They were promised Monday, Audrey. So so there are lots of factors here that that again, if the more we can control, I think the better off we're going to be here in in the town.
I just, I didn't I didn't speak to it before, but I certainly. I had my voice to others of a thanks to to all of you really, because I know it's. It's impacting everyone on this call. Different way into your responsibilities and the hours you're putting in and so just want to say thank you. But also to to support you making the decisions that you think are best for our kids. That's why we've made every decision. And all the time I've been on this committee is what's best for kids. And and of course, in this case, we're talking about our staff too. And so whatever protocols you think you need to implement. Do better by all of them, which is also doing better by all our families and our community. You know, I support you making those adjustments.
I just have one more question and I echo what Mark just said. But, you know, Audrey and Ed, I'm wondering if you can just talk to, I know I hear a lot about, you know, kind of asymptomatic spread. How big of an issue do you think that is? And and what are your thoughts in terms of potential changes in the protocol and if that will? Be something we can kind of keep an eye on or stay on top of?
Ed, do you know more? I don't know much about that.
So, you know, so of course I see all the cases, you know, where, you know, you Audrey sees mainly the school age. One of the things that I am definitely seeing, and this is where a lot of the confusion comes in, especially with our Warren school parents. The EEC, which oversees the daycares, has a completely different protocol right now than Desi does. Than what DPH does. So what kind of, so if you have a parent, for example, that's got a preschooler. That has like that's in like Cedar Street Kids Club, for example, and a kid at Warren. We're going by two different protocols. But the other thing we are seeing is those younger preschool kids. If they get COVID, many, many, many of them have no symptoms at all. And how we're finding it is somebody else in the house is sick, so the family decides to test the whole family. And again, I I, you know, I try to tell people this all the time. If your child has a stuffy or runny nose, that can be COVID and we need to test them. And do not send them to school. But that's that's the issue that we have. We're definitely seeing these mild, mild symptoms in the younger kids. And when we talk about the older people and even like our high school kids or. You know, we definitely see the difference between vaccinated people and unvaccinated people when it comes to the amount of symptoms and how sick they are.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on to the next topic? Okay, we'll wait to hear from you, Jim, about what the plan is.
Right, Audrey and Ed, thanks. I'll be in touch in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Get some sleep.
Equity audit, Jim?
Yeah, just a brief update. You know, we, you know, we went out to bid twice, right, Chris? To try to find a vendor that might be able to help with the equity audit. I forget how many finally came in last week. Was it eight?
I I had ten, but yeah, you're probably right with eight.
Eight, okay, we'll say eight to ten. And we're we're through the process. Nine, eight to ten, perfect, right in the middle. Mike is the last one who looked at them. I just got the packages today. So Chris. Went through, we evaluate them not only based on cost, but are they answering the questions that we asked within. Their proposal, Mike went through it and I've got them now and I'll go through them tomorrow. But from a cost perspective, it's anywhere from thirty-five thousand dollars to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. To have an equity audit done. And we're going through trying to identify the 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 right firm, which we would then bring back to the school committee. With a proposal to. Either hire a firm or not to go through this process. I will tell you that Ashland, along with many other districts around the Commonwealth are trying to engage in companies. And vendors to come in and actually perform equity audits across the district, looking at curriculum, discipline, all sorts of things that relate specifically to. You know, the equity. So that's really the brief update. Next meeting, I will have a much. You know, a much more detailed presentation as to what we're recommending as a organization.
We budget, Jim, we budget a certain amount for for the equity audit?
We did not because that came out of the, that came out of the summer workshops, if you remember. But we have the funding. That we're able to 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 do the work. We have school choice funding. Should we need it, but we also have some cost savings from salaries. With job changes, et cetera. I would not, you know, necessarily jump into the hundred and ten thousand dollar, but you know.
I wouldn't expect that we would. You can have that conversation later.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And then. Anything else on that?
Any other questions about that?
So the blueprint, that again, we had talked about with the summer, looking at potential firms to come in and and work with us on a new strategic plan. Those bids are, again, we sent them out initially and got zero vendors. And I don't know if it was the timing and the time of the year. But those bids are due, we tried to stagger them. Those are next Friday, the fourteenth. And I don't think we've received any to date, Chris, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so. If if we don't, then we'll just go back to. The process that I took eight years ago where. Myself and the admin team went went through. A very elaborate and detailed process of developing the plan. But that's where we are.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on to the next one? All right, the initial budget discussion for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, so I just wanted to again, touch base here to let folks know that. One, we will be having a full budget workshop on February twelfth. It's a Saturday. The intent is hopefully to be in person. We want, I wanted to certainly push it back a little bit with the with the surge that we were having. So we could have that opportunity. I know they're very fruitful conversations when we get folks into the room and talk about the budget itself. I can tell you that currently, if if I was to present something to you. In terms of the overage, if you will, of the three point seven five percent. Agreed upon increase from the town typically. Is we'd be about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Over that number. What, you know, is our target, if you will. And that, you know, includes not cutting any programs, still adding some staff, but but we have significant. I I always hate to do this to Kathy Silva, but she's, you know, she's right here. You know, we've got some significant out of district costs from move-ins this year. As well as some some kiddos that coming out of COVID has been really harmful to a lot of our kids and it's about four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Over, this was as of today, over last year's number. It's pretty significant. That's the that's the net difference, if you will, right? And it's not all that, meaning it's not all because of out of district. It's that just happens to be the number. And so we've got to, you know, dig a little more deeply into some things and. You know, make sure that our programming is still viable, that we have in our in our buildings that we've built, that they meet. The the needs of our kids and the profile of our students that are that are accessing those programs. We're our our English language learner population is exploding. I don't know what the newest number is, but in the two thirties, I. Um, I don't know what the newest number is, but in the two thirties, I think. Um, in terms of the number of L students that we have. Um, and, you know, that's pretty significant. Um, we are up a hundred and twenty kids in terms of enrollment alone from last year. Uh, and that doesn't include, I think, the, uh, Mike, I don't know what the final number of home schooled kids was that typically would be back. But it's another probably eight to ten families, maybe more. Um, so, you know, we're still a very desirable district, we're still growing. Uh, people are in our schools, um, you know, the middle school, uh, I was shocked when I looked at the numbers and. Uh, Dave is up over seven hundred students now. Um, and I think it was at seven hundred two days ago. Um, which is amazing, so. We have one, one class under two hundred across the district. One, Kelly, is that your juniors? That's it. So, um, so just, you know, again, just more of a touch base, let you know it's on our radar. We're, we're working on some things, we're going through it, all the principals, directors have, have put forth all their stuff to Chris. He's done the first compilation of things, you know, Mike and I sat with him, we went through some things and now we're going back and. Um, in, in taking a, a, you know, finer look at uh, where our numbers are and then before we present on February twelve, so.
You have time on that yet, Jim?
Uh, I don't, what time do you want? Uh, well, no, people have asked, and I, I, I mean, I don't really care, so.
Uh, it does, earlier the better, I guess, to be honest with you.
Is eight AM too early? Nine AM, eight AM, nine AM?
I can do wait.
I did, we got some people who have to drive in from various places, so.
I, I can do whatever works for majority of people, it's gonna be fine with me.
Yeah, me too.
Let's say.
I say nine?
Let's say nine o'clock.
Okay.
It's a, you know, it's a reasonable hour, you know, some of us already have five hours in, but it's fine.
Um, during the week, they come into Ashland a lot earlier than that, so.
They do, but it's, it's another day, it's another Saturday, so that's good.
Be nice, Paul.
And the night before, they'll be celebrating. So that's that, that's all I got.
All right, Paul, you're next.
Uh, let's see, Jimmy, gotta keep me.
Yeah.
Or anything, so, and uh, you know, I, I.
I told him to keep it brief.
Well, it, it'll be brief, cause I, I, I get into this funk where I'm in, in it and I don't remember what people know or don't know. Uh, I, I looked to him to help me.
I, I heard something about a new building going up, that's what I know.
Yeah, well, I'll start from the beginning, Mark.
Nineteen fifty-four.
Yeah. Um, so I think since the last time we had an update, the, the site clearing is, is continuing the excavation. They're actually uh, not really running into as much ledge as they expected. Uh, the blasting was supposed to have started this week, they're pushed out at least another week. Uh, because what they're running into is more boulders than, um, than, than ledge. So they're, that, that's rock they can break, they don't need, uh, need to blast. So they'll be, they'll be certainly less blasting and the duration of it will be, um, decreased. But, uh, as far as when that'll pick up, uh, we're not really sure. And they're, uh, they're, they're mobilizing, they're, they're being prepared to start as early as next week, but that might not even happen then. Uh, but to the. Um. They have started, uh, the, the rocks they have uncovered, they, they have started to break those. And that's, uh, that's, that's probably one of the most impactful, not to be a, a punny about it, but that's one of the most impactful things to the neighbors. It is a very loud concussive thing when they have, um, if you've seen them before. The excavators with essentially a jack camera, they call it a ho ram. Um, uh, on the end of it and breaking the rock. And so I have had conversations with uh, some of the neighbors, uh, who aren't happy about that. And, you know, they, they have every right to be unhappy about it, it's not. Uh, there's not, there's not a lot we can do, uh, we've talked with the team and, and they're making the mitigations they can. Um, I think it's as, as bad as it is right now, because the, where the pile is, they, they, that pile is been constructed. Because it's what they excavated at initial thing, so it's kind of closer to those, uh, those of butters on the Concord Street side. And so, uh, as what the team's gonna do is, once they get through that. Um, they're also gonna try to make some, some barriers to help deflect the sound a little bit. It's not something that's gonna have a dramatic impact, but they're doing what they can. But when they excavate more, they'll do, they'll attempt to break uh, the rock in over along the hill. Before they pile it for processing. So, um, so that's an ongoing process, like I said, this is, is one of the most impactful times for the neighbors. So we, we understand that and, and, you know, when they, when they wanna call me and yell at me. You know, I, I understand and I, I let them do it because I would, I'd be pretty mad too, so. Right now, it's pretty bad, because it's also all day, cause they're going through that pile. So, um, so that's what's going on with that, uh, since the last time. Uh, the, the oak tree did, uh, get taken down, uh, the. Uh, the trunk is over at DPW, so DPW is storing the trunk. And Jim, what else are on, well, I feel like I'm forgetting something there. Um, I know Claudia, I don't know if you wanna provide anything, so Claudia is still. Um, going up with, on Fisk Road in the mornings and, and things like that. Uh, I, I don't foresee us doing that uh, in perpetuity. Uh, I think, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out a right time and Claudia will figure out a right time to work with the neighbors and, and discontinue that. Because that, I think, we're gonna settle into an own, an own steady state there. The trucking that's been going on is, you know, probably as, as frequent as we're gonna see, right? They've been, they've been hauling out a lot of material. Uh, so the temporary power is in, so you probably, if you've driven by, there's, I think since the last time we've talked. Uh, you'll see telephone poles across the front of the site, uh, the, the current entrance to the school, so the outside of the construction area. That the, um, uh, the temp power, there's power poles that kind of cut across the, um, drop off loop. Uh, that's for the, the construction power. And the trailers are scheduled to be coming in next week, so those are the trailers, uh, the permanent trailers for. Uh, the project team, so Shomit will have a double wide and, and Compass will have a single trailer on site. There continues to be uh, uh, enormous budget pressure due to COVID. Uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that, we won't, we'll have better ideas when, when our final rounds of bidding, uh, occurs. But, um, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, we, we. Our public safety building project, uh, reaped the benefits of COVID, uh, quite frankly, there, uh, we became insignificant under budget. Because of the eagerness at that time and we're, um, experiencing quite the opposite, where the, the COVID's, um. Impacting lead times and, and, uh, and cost of a lot of things. And so, uh, we gotta work through a lot, a lot of things in that area, but we'll do that. And Jim, Claudia, what else am I missing?
Nothing really, I just, I, I had asked Claudia if she just wanted to show a few pictures, aerial pictures and things that she's taken. Of what the, the lot looks like now, I think it's, since you walked it on the, uh, the day of the, the groundbreaking, it, it looks a little different. So kinda cool, just to look at a couple of pictures.
Yeah, Claudia, I think that one, that one aerial you have, that kind of goes from Fisk, looking at the site is, is, is pretty cool.
So I think you can share, Claudia, your screen, I think I made you co-host. Oh, I did, I just did, I said, sorry.
He, he, he said it in past tense, but he meant he was doing it at the time.
Yeah.
And we go. Wow.
So as you can see, that's the main entrance on Fisk there, yeah. That's the rock pile that they're going through, uh, now and, and, uh, breaking down those rocks. Uh, I guess what I didn't also say is, at some point, it'll be concurrent with when they have enough rock that needs processing. They will, uh, begin rock crushing operations. So that's, that's a, a machine that does the rock crushing. And that is, is probably comparable in volume to the rock breaking. But it's different in that the rock breaking is this very concussive, non-consistent. Um, a whole ramming of the rocks, where the crusher is more of a continual noise that, you know. Can probably go, go into the background, it's almost the, the way I explain it to people is, it's probably gonna, hopefully anyway, uh, be more like. You know, when the power goes out in your house? And you, you just realize, wow, how much background noise my appliances were making and everything like that, it seems, seems so quiet. Um, so hopefully that'll be, while still loud, uh, less impactful to the neighbors. I think the, the general timeframe, um, as long as things go, continue to go well, would be, uh, the, the rock processing would be through. February.
So kind of neat stuff going on, so I think it's just good to get a, you know.
Yeah, the visual is fantastic.
So.
And these are the trucks yesterday morning, uh, early, waiting to be loaded and, uh, you can see this one here is being loaded. And then, uh, they were all lined up, they got loaded in about, well, there were about seven of them got loaded in, in about fifteen minutes. And, uh, they were lined up waiting for the time to, uh, make the trip up the road.
Claudia, how's, how's it impacting sort of, um. You know, kids getting time outside, you know, are things working okay in terms of, um, utilizing the front fields and all that?
Yeah, so some of the classes are, are ta- still taking like a sack break out in the back, there is room to do that still. You know, which has been really nice for everyone. Um, and then they do go out front for recess, everybody's going out front for recess. And, um, you know, it's, it's not perfect, but it's, it's been fine. Um, you know, we've been sharing the space out there nicely, we're lucky really that we have such a large space in the front as well as out in the back. Uh, the PTO wants to put up a couple of basketball hoops, so we're trying to coordinate, uh, a little bit with maintenance and, and, uh. Get a couple up, probably up here in the, in the circle, um, the Arger Circle for, uh, drop offs. Uh, so that kids could do some of that, we, uh, they bought some balls and things like that. And, uh, you know, we're continuing to explore anything that, that might, um. Give the kids something more to do, but really, for the most part, you give them a couple of balls and, and they're good to go. It would be nice if we had a wall, they like playing wall ball, but, um, in any case, they're, they're doing fine. Uh, the noise, they seem to be adjusting well to the, um, the noise, I've talked to all the teachers, especially those that are down in this area. Um, you know, for the most part, they say at first, they, they were kind of noticing it now, really. Only if they happen to be talking once in a while, they'll have to pause and, uh, until the noise stops, but. Um, that if the kids are working, the kids don't even seem to notice half the time. So, uh, this is the Ho Ram right here. Um, so it's, it's pretty near the building and of course, during the, this was taken on a weekend. But, uh, during the school days, the machinery is all around here, so. But, uh, you know, I, I did have a teacher say to me, she said, I know what we're getting for this. So, um, you know, like I said to Jim and, and Paul, that people have their eye on the prize.
That's the way to look at it.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. Wow.
Great photos. Pictures, just to give full credit here, uh, were taken by the Bucuzzies.
Like a drone?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, they flew it over there, there's a couple of videos as well, so they're fun.
Really cool, thank you.
And so i- i- if, if anyone does wanna, um, you know, go over at some point, uh, at all. Just, uh, ping Jim or I or Claudia, and we'll, we'll, uh, we'll organize that with, um. Uh, with Compass and, and Shomit, we, you know, if, if there's anybody that wants to go over and check out what's going on on the site, we, we can, we can certainly do that. I mean, I'm over there probably twice a week or, it, it really depends on the, on, on the, on what's going on. But, uh, I don't know how often, Jim, you, you're over there, but.
Thank you, Paul, and you're up again with the Warren approvals.
Uh, where is that? Bring that up real quick. Between December twenty, or sorry, between December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one and January sixth, twenty twenty-two. I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of four hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety cents. This includes general fund expenses of two hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and eighteen cents. And revolving expenses of, uh, one hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Grant expenses of, uh, thirty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. I also signed off on two million, three hundred thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine dollars and thirteen cents of payroll. Um, and I, I should probably, Jim, just back up real quick relative to Mendez, um, cause I don't think we had the. The, the neighbor communication and stuff like that, the email and, and stuff like, like last time, right? So, just, uh, uh, we're, we're sending out and, and Esmer, if you're still on, yeah, you are, uh. I apologize, I have not had a chance to review the, the, the template you've given me, you, you sent out, so, uh, that is on my to-do list, but I, I didn't wanna, uh. Uh, didn't wanna, I wanna, I wanna give it the time it deserves, so I apologize, I haven't done that yet. But we've been communicating with the neighbors, we have a list of, of neighbors that we're, um, we're do, we're communicating with. We also have, uh, set up, uh, on an email, uh, so mendes site questions at ashland k twelve, then I made that US. That is a, uh, an email, a distribution list that blasts the project team, myself, Jim, Claudia. Um, people from Compass and Shomit as well. Uh, so if anybody's having any issues or anything like that, um, they can do that. And they also were given, uh, a contact information for both Shomit, Compass, my, and myself. So if there's any emerg, uh, immediate things that need to be addressed, they can call us. And we also provided a notification list to, uh, the police and fire, so for off-hours, they're supposed to dial nine one one or. Or, uh, the business line of the police and they have contact information as well. So, uh, they, they, everybody can also obviously contact any of us individually or the building committee, but we have set up. Um, that and been communicating that to the neighbors with, uh, uh, a very specific thing. We're hoping to standardize and, and this is where as, uh, as we're helping us to standardize on a formatting and, and. And making a, a little better, uh, or more streamlined and efficient communication methods, so.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions on the project? Okay, um, approval of minutes, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. I was absent, so I don't have anything to offer here, do any of you have any recommended changes? Hearing none, does anybody have a motion to accept the minutes of December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one?
Second.
And all in favor, Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark? Aaron? Aaron?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Jim, do we have gifts and donations?
We do, uh, we have, uh, the Ashland, Ashland Moms Incorporated, three hundred and fifty dollars to the Helping Our Own Fund. Uh, Weight, uh, forty-five dollars, the H S, uh, Make-A-Wish. Uh, Looters Environmental, seventy-five dollars, and Miss Celine's Gifts and Donations. AFI, five thousand dollars to Flexible Seating Grant for the Warren School. Plan Aid, two hundred and thirty-one dollars, Miss Celine's Gifts and Donations. Frederick Vigno, two hundred and fifty dollars, Helping Our Own Fund. Uh, Rajesh Yadav, two hundred and fifty dollars, Helping Our Own Fund. And Wait, uh, three hundred fifty-six dollars, eighty-four cents, uh, for Ash Pack. And for the total of six thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars, eighty-four cents.
Excellent, thank you, we have a motion to accept the Gibson donations?
Allowed.
On the second?
Second.
All in favor, Aaron?
All in favor, Aaron? Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I, for me, and, uh, member updates, uh, any, Paul already gave his Mendez update. Is there anybody else who has anything they want to share?
Or is, was that the real reason to put me on the agenda, so I wasn't doing it in member updates and?
Yeah, that was the real reason, I'm not sure what, what I saved from, from putting you there instead of the other place, but.
I, I do have one, Lori. Um, so I, um, I had a MASC board meeting. Some point in the last month, I can't recall exactly when at this point. Um, one of the things that the board members discussed was the. board members discussed was the resolution process, so we think now, you know, Tina's been through, um, a a a November conference, but everybody else has as well, we have these these resolutions that are um, put together, and I, as you didn't, just came to me now, so I didn't come up with the, uh, and or specific point on this, but the, um, the M A C is looking to get school committees more interested and more engaged in the process of formulating those resolutions and and really trying to do some work to make sure those resolutions are representing a wider, um, wider group of school committees, and most of those have been submitted by sort of a couple of frequent flyer districts like our neighbors. For the East and Framingham, we always have a couple that they submit, and then there's a a resolution committee and and the M A C board poses a few, um, so that it does those resolutions are what M A C uses to formulate its advocacy strategies. Right, those are, those are basically its way of testing what is the, um, interest of the the organization and therefore school districts, school committees across the state, so I will, um, at our next meeting, I will try to, um, provide some more specific information. Um, and it may just be, at that point, there'll be clinics or programs that the M A C is gonna run um, related to that, but, you know, I think our our group has, um, recognized that advocacy is a part of our role, and this is a way for us to be considering whether or not to um, take on a particular issue that's of concern to us, and, um, and then propose a resolution and have it considered by the M A C and ultimately presented at the next November's conference. Just put that one out there.
It'd be interesting to see what they, what they do with that, because it would be nice to have that process uh, for lack of, but it's gonna sound crude, but be more valuable, right, you you seem, we seem to be just reacting and being like, what even does this mean? At a point where we're then asked to send you there to vote on it, right, so.
Right, and then sometimes I go and sometimes I don't.
Right, so, yeah, that can be changed to, you know, be more collective, more representative of everyone, and be more valuable, that'd be great.
Thank you. Mike, did you have something you want to share?
Um, I I, yeah, I can have a quick update, first, I want to just correct what I said earlier, uh, Chris was right, it wasn't D ten, um, for the equity audit. I I looked at my spreadsheet quickly and I I miscounted, so gotta give credit where credit's due for Chris there, uh, in in terms of, um, very quick assistant superintendent's update, uh, we've got a professional development day, uh, coming up on Friday, um, the fourteenth. Uh, we're we're excited about all of the things that are going to be happening specifically, um, around S E L. Um, some great stuff is gonna be going on at Pitterway, uh, with S E L as well as throughout the other buildings, I know that Jen Cutler is going to be meeting with, uh, the counselors and a variety of staff members to talk about uh, the DESA program that she had spoken with you folks about earlier in the year. Um, also, at the middle school, they're gonna be working on our, um, D E I work with our consultants, Des and Chris. So we're excited to continue that work, um, at the middle school level, and these counselors are going to be um, putting together some resources, uh, for the teachers specifically around the area of social media, uh, which is really important to be able to make sure that all of our students are are understanding the the dangers of that, um. Uh, the other things that are happening is our our continued work with Claire Landergren is going to be going on at the elementary school level. And she's gonna be focusing on writing, uh, specifically revising and editing with our with our teachers, and at the high school level, uh, Kelly has, um, the A D L World of Difference Workshop happening in the afternoon for her entire staff, which is a great training. And they're going to be focusing on just different collaborative efforts for te- the teams, various teams and and, um, you know, grade level teams and and subject level teams throughout the entire district, uh, at certain points during the day, and finally, um, Kathy has really set up some excellent professional development opportunities for our uh, special education program staff to meet, uh, Kathy and her special ed coordinators have gotten together to, um, ensure some really good, positive collaborative time for the different folks who work within those programs to meet vertically, which is something we have very rarely done, and I think that's gonna serve as a real um, positive thing for our staff moving forward, and also the Y Ls, the Y L, the Y L folks are gonna get some time to work collaboratively as well vertically, which does not happen nearly enough, so I'm excited about that day, and I think it's gonna be really beneficial for everybody. So thanks for the time, I just wanted to really feel you on that.
Mike, do you have any details on the, uh, social media one?
Uh, essentially, uh, the guidance folks are going to get together, and they're going to just brainstorm some different ways that they can make sure that, uh, our teachers are are getting some valuable resources and look to you know, collaborate with one another to to provide some some different, um, teaching tools that can be presented to kids, uh, and and it's it's really, you know, one of those things where they're gonna take some time and and make sure they collect some some great stuff to be able to pass along.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to share before we seek a motion to adjourn? Okay, who's got it?
Move to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Thank you.
No, never fall, never fall. Erin? Erin?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everybody, thank you.
Snow day tomorrow.
And there, snow day tomorrow, try to get some.
Bye, guys.
Yeah.